Good evening, everyone. Can we have some quiet, please? Just wait for the doors to close. So, welcome to the first meeting of the new council. This is the annual town council meeting. So, the first item on the agenda is to elect the chairman of the council for the 2023-24 No, this is a council meeting. This is a council meeting. It is not a public meeting. Do you mind being quiet? Well. You might not have realised, but I am no longer a councillor. I cannot answer those questions because I don't know. It's nothing to do with me. You will have to ask the clerk or whoever is responsible. But I can't answer that question. And if you don't be quiet, I'll ask you to leave. Do you mind if we get on with this meeting? Thank you. Thank you. Right, this is. Could everybody please be quiet? Right, the first item on the agenda is to elect the chairman of the council for the 2023-24 municipal year. So can I receive proposals for the position of chairman of the council? Anyone proposing? Anyone? Thank you, Paul.
So I propose Ben Aldridge. I think Ben would be suitable for the day for the chair with his knowledge and experience over the last four years and the tremendous work he's done.
Oh, thank you, Paul. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Mike. Can you give your reasons?
My reasons, yes. Very happy to endorse the proposal. And I too feel that Ben has made a very good and sound contribution over the last four years, term of office.
Thank you. Do we have any other proposals for chairman? Okay, so can we take a vote, please? All those in favour of Ben being chairman? That's everybody. Thank you. So it's your turn, Ben.
I can't answer it, Paul. As I said to you earlier on, I don't know. I can't answer. I got an email this afternoon and two to go to go to say I didn't make it. So I'm not, I can't answer it. I'd rather just get on. So. Yeah, I say two seconds, but yeah, anyway. I'll make it very quick. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, it's kind of obvious. Thank you to the councillors. You're very confident. Thank you for the residents coming this evening. Hopefully, I can do your justice over the next 12 months. I'll give it my all like I've given the last four years my all. So let's see how the next 12 months unravel itself. Glad to thank for retiring chairman. I suppose that's me, I suppose. Well, I think, you know, whether people disagree with you or not, that's fine. Everyone has their own opinion. Everyone's entitled to it. But I think you've actually done an immense amount of work, not only the past two years as chairman, the past four years as a councillor. So I owe you a huge thanks for appreciation. I hope you help me out through the years. I do think the town does as well for what you have done. So thank you very much from me and the rest of the previous town council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. I have written a short speech, which will be my last one. Well, wasn't that bad? So I know the agenda says that I will review my term in office. I think, to be honest, you've heard more than enough during the election campaign about our achievements and our failures over the past four years. So you don't want to hear any more about that. Instead, I'm going to take this last opportunity to make a few personal observations. I remember four years ago when Portishead Independents were first elected, we were so excited. We were pioneers. We were going to change the world. Well, that didn't exactly go to plan, but I hope the vision and passion and values that galvanised and inspired us then will continue to inspire the new council. So congratulations to all the elected councillors, all of whom are Portishead independents. So we must have been doing something right. However, no opposition does have its drawbacks. There is a danger you will become complacent. Please don't let that happen. You need to be extra vigilant and extra questioning. And sometimes you must be prepared to challenge your colleagues robustly, as if you were indeed the opposition. So I wish you good luck. I can't hide the fact that it won't always be easy, as you've already found out. It's very hard work and it's definitely not always appreciated. I'm sure you know that it's not possible to please everyone, but there are several ways of expressing your dissatisfaction. And I hope that the personal abuse from a small handful of residents that has marked the term of office for the last council will not recur. There is no need to be rude or insulting, and there's been far too much of that. Just to take one personal example. I've been derided for moving a few miles away from Portishead while still a councillor. Incidentally, still within three miles of the Portishead boundary. But I have never made public, or indeed really told anybody, the reasons for my moving after 50 years as a resident of Portishead. Nor of the personal tragedies and emotional turmoil that lay behind that move. So please think twice before you speak, because what you say may be really unkind and hurtful. All town councillors are unpaid volunteers, giving up their time for the good cause of the town. They could easily have volunteered for other things and not risk suffering the same abuse. They won't always get things right, but I guarantee they will always do the best. It's good to see some of the district councillors here tonight. I believe it is very important that they attend town council meetings, as there is no better way to learn about the problems and aspirations of the town that they are representing. Portishead needs strong representation at North Somerset Council to ensure that their voice gets heard and Portishead gets the investment that it deserves. I am sure the new town council will look forward to robust and effective support from all of our new North Somerset councillors. Finally, thank you to all the councillors who made up the previous council for their hard work and dedication. In particular to Paul Gardner for the quite extraordinary amount of work he's got done and for his inspirational ideas, help and guidance. Also, thank you to Wendy and all the staff for their hard work and support. We hit gold when we appointed Wendy, and her knowledge and experience will be invaluable to the new council. So good luck. I wish all of you every success. So over to you, Ben.
Two seconds while I just jiggle down a little bit. We need to get nudging the rear, then I'm kind of closer. And I change mics as well. Just sign him a declaration of interest, two seconds. Of acceptance, sorry. Thank you. So over to me, one second. So item six is obviously to elect the vice chair of the council for the municipal year 2023-2024. Do we have a proposal and a second? Any suggestions for the vice chair of the town council? I'd personally like to select, in my opinion, Paul Churchill. Reasons are, he supported me admirably for the past best part of two years as the vice chair of the Community Matters Committee. And when we were kind of like batting our d's off each other, who's always been there, he's supported me, he's supported fellow councillors, and he's worked tirelessly again for this town at the time he's been a councillor. So I'd like to propose Paul Churchill. And he'd like to second it. Tim?
Yeah, I'll second it for the good work he's done with the community, all his hard work. Definitely.
Thank you, Tim. Therefore, all those in favour of Paul Churchill becoming the vice chairman of the council in municipal year 2023-2024, please raise your hands. That's everybody. Thank you. And thank you, Paul. Over to you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, everybody, for that vote of confidence. I really appreciate everything that we all do as a team on the town council. And I will work hard, as I always have done, for the best for Portishead. Thank you very much.
Declaration of acceptance of office, obviously to receive the acceptance of office from the elected town council members for 2023. Obviously, please note, obviously, Alan George gives apologies this evening. He has a long-previously standing holiday that he booked for any of the meeting dates. And therefore, he's already submitted his acceptance of office, which Wendy does have. Yeah, that's fine. I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I can confirm that all of the elected town councillors, namely Michael Johnston, Bob Cartwright, Emma Blackmore, Martin Downling, Janet Davy, John Davy, Ben Aldridge, David Gunnel, Paul Churchill, Carol Preston, Tim Snaden, Francesca Stone and Roger Whitfield, have all signed their declarations of acceptance of office in my presence and been countersigned.
Thank you, Wendy. Declaration of councillors' interests and requests for dispensation. To declare any interest relating to business at the meeting and receive any dispensation requests from the clerk on the Localism Act 2011, section 2934. Can I ask you all to get them all in, please? It is really important. They've got to come in. When do you need them in by?
This is for this meeting.
Just for this meeting? Okay, that's fine. So I'll go around the room and just ask anyone if you do have any. Martin, any request for dispensation? Any requests for dispensation? Or register of interest? No?
No, not at all.
Thank you. David? Mike? No interest to you. Tim?
No, nothing here.
Frankie?
No, nothing to declare.
Harold?
Likewise, nothing to declare.
Roger?
No, nothing to declare.
Or nothing to declare? Emma?
No business to declare.
Paul?
Nothing to declare.
I mean, nothing to declare that I'm aware of. Thank you all. Apologies for absence. Obviously, I say, I've already mentioned one, Alan George, who's, they had a long booked pre-holiday. Also Janet Davy and John Davy. Okay. So delegation of arrangements to committees, the advisory groups, working groups, staff and other local bodies. Obviously, to review the terms of reference and delegation arrangements to committees and advisory groups as follows. Planning advisory group, Community Matters Committee and Staffing and Finance Committee. And the recommendation is to approve the terms of reference for planning group appendix 10A, Community Matters Committee appendix 10B and Staffing and Finance Committee appendix 10C. Does anybody have any questions on this?
I was just wondering whether we needed to add Brackenwood to the Community Matters list of recreational facilities, or is it too early?
Having been in conversations with the residents at Brackenwood Gardens, I would suggest it's too early. Until we've kind of, the dialogue's kind of, there's quite a lot of work to be behind the scenes in terms of managing the wards so it's safe first, et cetera. So yeah, I think we need to get that first done. And also have another meeting with them as well, which we did say would happen, but not till after the election. Yeah, yeah. So do I have a proposal to accept the terms of reference? David, thank you. A second. Paul Churchill, thank you. All those in favour? Yeah, that's everybody. I was having one to last. 10.2, authorisation of a town clerk, so authorize the town clerk to sign or where appropriate to have sealed on behalf of the town council any orders, deeds or documents necessary to give effect to any matters contained in the reports received at this meeting or in any future resolutions passed by the town council. Does anybody have any questions on this item? I am happy to propose that the clerk has had the authorization to sign, as I've stipulated. Anybody have a second to motion? Paul Churchill first. Yeah, thank you. All those in favour? Please raise your hand. So yes, from everybody. Thank you. Item 11, appointment of committees and advisory groups 2023-2024. Consider appointment of members to the committees and advisory groups, appoint a chairman and vice chairman for planning advisory, Community Matters Committee, Staffing and Finance Committee, which will be chairs and vice chairs. And obviously, just for clarity on the staffing and finance, that does normally do the chairs, vice chairs, obviously, the council and usually the community matters, planning advisory chairs. I'm going to check this one second. So I'll start with the top one first, planning advisory, running nominations for the chairman of the planning advisory group. I'd like to nominate Mike personally. Experience, we've had conversations that we've had. Anybody, anybody else? Or any comments? Or anyone happy to second Mike?
I'm happy to second Mike.
Thank you. If anyone's in favour of Mike being the chairman of the planning advisory, please raise your hands. Absolutely, yes, from everybody. Obviously, with such mike for obvious reasons. And also vice chairman of the planning advisory group. Again, I'd like to nominate Martin again, from the chats I've had with him since Friday. Obviously before Friday, but particularly since Friday, once we knew what was happening. So I'd like to nominate Martin for the vice chair of the planning advisory group. Somebody have to second the motion? Mike? You're a bit slow there, Bob. If anyone's in favour of Martin being the vice chairman of the planning advisory group, can you please raise your hands? Everybody again when it's session, Martin, obviously. Community Matters Committee. Again, to elect the chairman and the vice chair. I'll say, because I've asked him if he'd mind, and I'd like to nominate Paul Churchill for very obvious reasons. He's been my assistant, vice chair for the past best part of two years, and I say earlier, he's supported me admirably. So I think he'll take it forward very, very well. So I'd like to nominate Paul Churchill as the chair of the Community Matters. Have you have a second? Tim, happy to second. If you're in favour, can you please raise your hand? So yes, we have exception, obviously. Paul? Staffing and finance. Oh, sorry, vice chair. Pause. Vice chair for the Community Matters. Anybody want to volunteer?
I would like to nominate Emma. I think, I think the work that Emma's done prior to being part of the town council would be hugely beneficial to the Community Matters Committee.
Thank you, Paul. Somebody happy to second the motion? Tim? It's straight in my ear, Bob. Thank you both. If everybody's in favour, please raise your hands if you're in favour of Emma being vice chair.
Yes.
Thank you both. Paul and Emma. Staffing and finance, again, chair and vice chair. Would anybody like to nominate anybody for chair of the staffing finance?
Paul, I'd like to nominate John. I know John's not here, but I think with his knowledge and experience and his financial background, I think he would be key to that role.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody happy to second the motion? Tim? You need to move, Tim, seriously. Yeah. If anyone's in favour of John becoming, in his absence admittedly, chairman of the staffing and finance, please raise your hands. I see, yes. And we move on to vice chair, obviously of staffing and finance. Anybody have to approve? Anybody? Come on, put the hand forward. I'm looking at one person I would like it to be. I'd like to nominate David, again, for his experience and what he's done. So I'd nominate David as vice chair of staffing and finance. Anybody like to second the motion? Bob Cartwright. If you're in favour of nominating David to be vice chair of staffing and finance, please raise your hands, please. That's everybody. Yeah. Thank you. No. I was going to do that second. So obviously, also the committees obviously need relevant members, because they won't have a chair and vice chair, because I'm sure they'll get fairly bored fairly quickly talking to themselves. So I will start off the planning advisory for people that I would like to nominate personally, from talking to them since Friday. Obviously, myself, as the chair of the council, I'll be on it. Emma, Bob Cartwright, Carol, Timmy, and also Roger. Is somebody happy to second the motion? Martin went up, yeah. Thank you, Martin. If you're in favour of myself, Emma, Bob, Carol, Tim and Roger being members of the planning advisory, sorry, please raise your hands. Yeah, thank you. Members of the Community Matters Committee. Again, I run this one out. Again, I've spoken to them all since Friday extensively. I would like to personally nominate Frankie, Bob Cartwright, Carol, Janet in her absence, but I have spoken to her, asked her. And also David and obviously myself as chair of the council. Anybody like to second the motion? Roger, thank you, Roger. I just saw a spaceship hand go out. If you're in favour of Frankie, Bob, Carol, Janet, David and myself being members of the Community Matters Committee, please raise your hands. That is a yes. You can, if you, yeah?
Yeah, can I congratulate Frankie? I think it's really good that we've got someone young and youthful and supporting community matters. I think that's an absolutely brilliant thing to do. So well done.
Excuse me? I paid a lot of money for my looks. Jeez. Who says? I'm as young as I feel all my life. Been at the hospital for two days as well. Need to go back. The members of staffing and finance, again, through speaking to them last week. I would like to nominate Paul Churchill, Mike, Emma and myself again, obviously as chair of the council. Would anybody like to second the motion? David, thank you, David. All those in favour of Paul, Mike, Emma and myself being members of the staffing and finance committee, please raise your hands now. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you all. Much appreciated. Item 12. Sorry, I'll say it again. Item 12, working parties. To consider and appoint chairman, vice chairman and members for the following working parties. The Grants Working Party, which can be any time a grant comes in from either a group like Cairns or the Youth Centre or Portishead in Bloom. Obviously, the Grants Working Party meets. The questions are all asked by the relevant members. Nikki in the back office, when the office does an immense amount of work on the grants, supported obviously by Amy, putting it out on social media and website, et cetera, and getting in feedback. So the Grants Working Party. Want to get there? For the Community Matters Grants Working Party, it falls into Community Matters, obviously generally. I would like to nominate the members to be Paul Churchill, John Davy in his absence, for obvious reasons, is now chair of staffing and finance. Mike and also myself. And I put myself forward because I've kind of, I think I can offer some help in the first year for these guys, but I've sat on it. But ultimately, the chair of the Community Matters, well, actually, would share the meetings. So I'm happy to propose that, say, Paul, John, Mike and myself, the members of the Grants Working Party for 23-24. Is anyone happy to second the motion? Martin, thank you. Let's see, hand whizz up. If you're in favour, can you please raise your hands? That is a yes. Thank you. The Cost of Living Fund Working Party, obviously this is kind of a new one that did spring up out of the precepts. Because I felt that the town and people in the town need the help. Particularly after the season announcements again that the Bank of England rates gone up, which isn't helpful to most people, quite frankly. Particularly the fact they keep telling us food prices are going to come down and they're now told to say they're expecting to rise again. So, yeah, what's going on? So there are people in hardship in this town. And at the moment, from the people I'm talking to, it's the people you least expect it to be, so everyone expects it to be Fred, Bob, Frida, whoever, it's not, it can be any of us. So I feel very strongly about this one, because this was my brainchild. I'm not, I'm proud to admit it, because I think it was the right thing to do to help people in this town. I know it raised a preset, but I stand by that, it's the right thing to do. People need help and if we can help them, we should help them. Therefore, I would like to propose that Paul Churchill, obviously as Chair of the Community Matters. Janet, because of the work she does with the wellbeing, Cairns and the hub etcetera, along with Paul. Emma, again, her experience within the community and what she's done, particularly, I'm aware of, obviously during Covid and post-Covid, which is immense. And obviously myself, again, this change kind of just for the first year particularly. Is somebody happy to second that motion? David, thank you. If you're in favour of Paul, Janet, Emma and myself being on the Cost of Living Working Party, please raise your hands. So yes. Yeah, thank you, thank you all. I need a drink, sorry. Power, General Power of Competence, to pass a resolution to confirm that the town council is eligible to exercise the General Power of Competence. The town council meets the following criteria, enabling it to exercise the General Power of Competence, General Power of Competence. Prescribed conditions, Order 2012, SI 2012 number 965. The number of councillors elected at the May, at the elections of May 2023 equals exceeds two thirds of the total number of councillors. Brackets one, this includes uncontested seats. The town clerk holds a specific, sector-specific qualification, has completed the relevant training provided through the NTS. The qualification certificate in local council administration. Therefore, the recommendation is as follows, that the council confirms that it is eligible to exercise the General Power of Competence, namely it meets the following criteria. The number of councillors elected at the May 2023 elections equals exceeds two thirds of the number of councillors. Brackets one, this includes uncontested seats, the town clerk holds a sector-specific qualification. It's the relevant training provided through the NTS, office certificate, local council administration. I'm happy to propose the motion, is somebody happy to second the motion? Roger, thank you, Roger. All those in favour? I see, yes, thank you. Item 14 is subscriptions to other bodies. Confirm that the town council subscribes to the following bodies and obviously we have subscribed to these for the past four years of council that I'm aware of. So I'll read them out as follows, Avon Wildlife Trust, Friends of Western Bigwood, £2.50 per month, bless you. Now. Now, Avon Local Council Administration, £2,818.26. Open Spaces Society, £45. Society of Local Council Clerks, Arcane Deputy, £682. South West Councils, £445. CPRE, Countryside Charity, £36 and Seven Net Limited, £450. Does anybody have any questions on these? Mike?
Yes, I'm just querying the first one, Avon Wildlife Trust. £2.50 a month seems a little paltry and I just wondered whether it could go up in line with inflation. Either to £3 or £3.50 a month.
We will find out on that one, what subscription is, because obviously that's what they second, I don't know, we will, we will find out much on that one. So delay that one. So we will defer membership, the Avon Wildlife, or subscriptions as you say, for Avon Wildlife Trust, Friends of Western Bigwood, while we seek further clarification. That will come back, because we've got it on the June meeting. Anybody else have any other questions? Timmy?
These payments, are they monthly or annually, for the rest of them?
Annually, yeah. Anybody else have any questions? No. Therefore, I propose that we approve the relevant subscriptions with the exception of Avon Wildlife Trust. Obviously, which is monthly, but the other ones are all annual, to now Open Spaces, Society of Local Council Clerks, South West Councils, CPRE and Seven Net Limited. For 2023, 2024 year. I'm happy to propose the motion, anybody happy to second the motion? Frankie, thank you Frankie. If you're in favour of passing this motion, please raise your hands. Let's see, yes. Thank you. Item 15 is to appoint councillors in representative roles for the following kind of groups etcetera that go on in the town. And I have a list here of people I've spoken to. So I'm prepared tonight. I just hope they're in the right order, I don't know where they are. Question, I've added one, that's Brackenwood. Yeah, yeah, so there are, there are two additions to this list that's in your meeting minutes. Apologies, one of them is Brackenwood and the other one is the airport, which obviously started last year. So I shall start at the top. Yeah, so systems advice, North Somerset. The two proposed representatives. Janet, in her absence, I have spoken to her, and again, that's down to what she does do with the hub etcetera and the wellbeing. And also Bob Cartwright. I'm going to go through these. I'm not going to vote them all individually, we'll go on the whole batch at the end, if anyone has any questions, please stop me and ask. And if you disagree with the name being against it, please stop me and ask. Gertrude Gales and North Western Lotments, I've split these ones up into two bits and you'll see why in a second. Gertrude Gales, I'm nominating Carol. She lives that neck of the world, it's kind of helpful. So, and I've spoken to her again, she's happy. And North Western Lotments, again, as Paul lives in North Western, I've asked Paul and again, he's happy to be the representatives on, as the council for that. The Lakegrounds Management Committee, yeah, I'm doing these different tournaments. The representatives I'm nominating are Janet, Mike, David, Tim. Obviously, he's the Town and District Council for North Ward, which is Lakegrounds, is in. Martin as well. Anyone any questions? No, just no more silence. Now, City District Transport Trust, as you're probably all aware, there's a council, we support them and there is an item on the end of the agenda this evening or towards the end. Obviously, they provide obviously community transport to people that need to get from A to B. Which is particularly invaluable at the moment, the fact that we have a terribly unreliable service for a variety of reasons. Therefore, they step in and do an immense job. I'm nominating for that representatives, Bob Cartwright and obviously also Emma. Bob, obviously, because he's kind of, he's got a lot of interest in that area, but also particularly Emma. Like she has the contacts, particularly the Covid contacts etcetera, that still need help and support. Parish Wharf Winter Boat Storage, which if you don't know, that's the boat storage area at the end of the marina towards the Mirage, I believe it is. Always get that building wrong. I have spoken to him, he isn't here, but Alan is happy to be the town council representative on, on that group. Fair Trade Portershead, I'd like to give a thanks to Sue, who's done the work on this for the past number of years, I know she's here. So thank you Sue for your help on this. Obviously, a number of things it does, Sue dressed up in a banana, which is immense. She wouldn't dress up this year in an orange, eh? Never, I promise you. It was too amusing, Sue, but you looked cool in it. I did ask you this year for an orange. He said no, disappointing. But obviously, but also the, it's the farmers market as well, which obviously goes in the Waitrose Piazza on a regular basis. So again, the work goes on behind the scenes a lot, so I'm obviously nominate Martin for that one. The one that's not on here, which obviously I've added to my list, but it is on Wendy's list now, is Brackenwood. Obviously, most of you are aware, we, we purchased Brackenwood. Which is up on top of Nor Road and behind Brackenwood Gardens and Devonshire Place. We bought it last year and obviously we've been in dialogue with residents, set back directly onto this. To try and make it a public community again, but there's, there's quite a lot of work to go in front end first. So I'd like to nominate, sounds arrogant, apologies, myself, mainly because I was boldly in contact with them. I'd like to kind of keep going on that one, I'll come back to you in a second then. Roger and Frankie, once again, she kind of lives up that neck of the world. Lyn, quick question on that one? Sorry, it's not, and you, my brain twigged about five minutes ago thinking it's not on this list, but it needs to be on this list, yeah. I'll come to that one in a second and explain why. Thank you, Lyn, I'd not forgotten, it had sung to my head, I promise you. So obviously, Brackenwood, to represent Brackenwood, which is discussion with residents, but also working with officers, particularly Sharon. Kind of getting it all cleared, made safe, and tree works need to go on following the tree survey. I'd like to see Roger, Frankie and myself. Then there's the single-use plastic free community steering group, which again is, is heavily linking with Turner Tide. I'd like to nominate Carol for that one. Tourism and Heritage Leeds, again, it's kind of the different bus trips that do come into Portishead, particularly from the docks, from the big ferry is docking. Janet, Martin and Mike. Janet was on it last year, so she'd like to be on it again. Twinning Association, again Janet, she has worked with them the past few years and she would like to be on it again. There is a glass bowl to come our way apparently, which we need to work out, a bit of a presentation we need to work out with them. Also find out when the twinning is. So again, lots of nominate Janet, and so that was mainly because she'd been up last year and she'd like to continue, so nobody else put their hand up, so I said that's right. Wellbeing Leeds, local partnerships, I'm going to wrap these into two, and Wellbeing Leeds, wider partnership strategy. They are two separate groups, but ultimately they kind of serve the same purpose. One of them is, is mainly Portishead, obviously, and the other bit is linking the groups outside of Portishead. The wider North Somerset District, making sure there is link up and people actually talking to each other. As a BTAB, so it's good to talk. So yeah, so I'd like to nominate Janet for both, Emma for both, David for both, Carol for both and Paul Churchill for both. As most of you probably are aware, particularly Janet and Paul have worked tirelessly on this, and particularly to make sure, along with the officers and Claire, and obviously now Laura, who's in the room, I believe at the back of the room. To make sure, obviously this is extremely beneficial to residents, possibly when they need the help, to get the help. And the hub has been a huge success since we, we started last year. The youth centre representatives. You'll see too, we're nominating three, that's fine, isn't it? Yeah. Three people that I'm nominating, again, I have spoken to John in his absence. Obviously, for obvious reasons, we have an SLA with the youth centre, so we pay them X amount of money, I think it was £35,000 this year from memory. Which they did a presentation for, but Kim did back at the April meeting, which was very, very good if you were here. So thank you to Kim and the team behind the scenes, they're doing immense amount of work, without Kim and the team, it's, yeah, that place is amazing. So I'd like to nominate John, Davey, Emma, for obvious reasons, and myself. To be the representative for the council of the youth centre. The PCCA, which is the airport. I'd like Paul to stay on this one, because he's done it for the past year, working with them. I know a lot of people were ignored on the airport expansion, but it's important that we have a say on it. I personally don't agree with it, but I think we should have a say, that's for sure. North Somerset Water Safety and Coastal Advisory Group. I would like to nominate David and Mike for those, please. And the last one is the Portishead Town Football Club. As you're all aware, or should be aware, myself and Paul Gardner unraveled the mystery of the football club very early on in 2019 when we were elected. And it was a mystery, some of it still is in my head. Where there was a developer involved, which we got rid of. And we gave them a lease to give them continuity, the biggest football club in the whole of South West, they are massive. Well, in excess, I believe it is 1,200 members, I'm not, yeah, thought it was, right. We've helped them massively, we've supported them massively, we've worked through the process with them. They're currently going through the finite details of putting in 3D pitch, 3G pitch, which has been worked on heavily between us and particularly the Somerset FA. Which the Somerset FA are a kind of bankrolling effectively, majority. Therefore, we need a representative to be on the football club committee, which is what is required within the lease. I'm happy to do it, for a common sense reason in my head, the fact that I've been a representative with them for the past four years. However, I'm also more than happy if any one of you would like to be the representative on the football club committee, and that will be going, attending their committee meetings, answering any questions they may have of the town council. And or helping them through the process, because they cannot do anything, obviously on that land. I put a 3D pitch in without the, obviously form permission of the council for one. They do run three or so events every year. Firework display, a kind of singing concert thing, and there is one more, Lyn. I'm looking at you for this one, because I can't think what the third one is. Is it the Fun Day? The big Fun Day they have in the concert at the end of the evening? It might, I think it might be the third one, so that again, they, they do ask permission every year, they do do everything they need to do. Does anybody have any questions on these relevant groups and the relevant representatives that I propose? Are you all happy, I suppose is the question I've spoken to you all, but are you still happy? Lyn? And then Jeff? Yes, definitely, definitely, yeah, definitely, I want, I need, we need to have the link with yourself and Barbara. You're integral to this, because, because you know the residents better than we do, or I do, on Bristol Road. So, and actually you've also been, you've made your provider at times, it's been invaluable, so thank you to you and Barbara. The help you've had over the past four years on this one. Jeff, quick question? Yeah. We, yeah, well, yeah, I get your point, I do get your point, we've done it for the past X amount of years this way, I'm not saying it's correct. I don't, I think it's worked quite well. Does anybody have any comments on this one? Do we think, because we, if you will, you will notice, obviously we have added some substitutes here and there and added three or four people somewhere, places. Anybody like to sit on any one of them groups as additional? You don't jump ball at once. I think it's important, yeah, particularly the fact that the skate park's now in. So yeah, that's my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for everybody, everyone else has got, it's all just an opinion, Bob.
Yeah, I just think that some of the, the groups require more than one or possibly two. When it comes down to the football ground, I think we should have more than one person, to be honest, because it's, there could be a lot of changes over the next few years with that, so we need to keep our foot on the ground on that one. there could be a lot of changes over the next few years with that. So we need to keep our foot on the ground on that one.
Paul? I'll take your point, Jeff. I think for now, I'm going to hold it as it is. However, we will look at it if we need to. I think, because I think, say, it has worked quite well so far, but if we do need more, and there's Paul's point that written within the lease of the football club, it's quite explicit that there is one rep sits there. However, is one person able to do it? No, it will need assistance. So we will work on that one. So just going back to the point, would anybody like to sit on the committee for the football club?
I've played for Portishead Town Girls for a number of years, so that's something I would like to get involved with because I've been up there quite a long time.
Thank you, Frankie. Mike, you add your hand up.
Yes, you can add me to the twinning association. I have been a past member.
Cool. Thank you. Have you got that? Thank you. Anybody else?
Bob? Yeah, Ben, I'd like to help at least support the football club as well if I can, or anything I can support with.
That's fine. Cool. Thank you, Bob. So we've got one key vote, which we need to keep separate here, Ben. This is for the football club, because there is one very clear requirement. We have to have one person that sits on the committee. Now, it's either Bob, Frankie or myself. Obviously, I'm going to kind of stay clear of this one a little bit. So is anybody happy? Or is anybody would like to propose second Bob, I suppose, ultimately? Would anyone like second Bob to be on the committee for the football club? If you're in favour, please raise your hands. Two, three, four. I'm happy, so I've got no problem. Have you got question characters? Well, I don't know. Apparently I can. Hey, I don't know. Frankie? Is anybody happy to second Frankie? Tim, thank you, Tim. If you're in favour of Frankie sitting on the committee for the football club, can you please raise your hands? Four, five, six, seven. Eight, was it? I'm going to politely step away because I think it's the right thing to do. Yeah. No, I'm not at all. So I'm not going to be a rep on the football club at all. So I'm not asking for anyone to vote for me anyway. So therefore Frankie, you'll be the rep for the football club. That is, one is separate. I'll obviously work with, I'll help you on that one. I will support you. Paul, one second. Yeah, Paul Gardner, I know you're not a councillor anymore, but you've had invaluable experience on this one and help, particularly with the football club. Will you help on this one just for the first few months? Just going to help us through this process, please? Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'll have to go to sleep. So football club is separate. That is passed, which is Frankie. All the other groups are as they were, with the exception of twinning, which Mike finally volunteered for. Thank you, Mike. Therefore, I am proposing that we elect the relevant councillors to work on the groups that I quoted with the introduction, obviously, in addition of, obviously, the football club, which is there and voted on separately, and say Brackenwood, which is in the master list. Yeah. So does anyone have to second the motion? Timmy, just kind of look straight at you, you gaudies. All those in favour of the relevant councillors on the working groups with them? Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Item 16 is the town council meetings for 2023, 2024 year as within Appendix 16A. Does anybody have any questions on this one? I have one, but I'll ask anyone else first. Anyone any questions on this one? David?
It's just a small one. The start times for most meetings, the summer 30 hours are at eight. It's a good reason why someone's starting later for those.
Yeah, so the meeting on the 25th of May, Community Matters, eight o'clock. Community Matters 28th September is eight thirty. Eight fifteen on the 21st of December. Staffing finance is seven o'clock. They should all be seven o'clock, seven thirty. They are typos. They should all be seven thirty start, unless otherwise specified before the meeting minutes are issued formally for the summons. So just to clarify, there are type errors on the timings. All meetings do start at seven thirty PM, unless otherwise specified in the meeting minutes and agendas before the meetings are issued to councillors and then put on the relevant notice boards around the town. I have any one question? The Community Matters meeting, it's not my decision ultimately, to a degree. The 24th of August Community Matters meeting. We are slap bang in the middle of summer holidays. And I know last year particularly, we had a number of councillors that were unable to make the meeting. And I was one of them because I wasn't even here. I'm proposing that we defer and don't have a meeting for Community Matters only in August. Does anybody have any questions and or objects on that one? I'll come to that one in a second. Yeah. Yeah. Laura? As long as it's under certain money, we can still turn it around in that month. We can also convene any emergency general meeting, so we can do it. We can still do it. There are ways around it. I'm just proposing, in my head, it's logical because most people are on holiday, particularly with families are on holiday. Okay. Yeah, go on, Jeff. Yeah. Yes, that's what Wendy's just suggested. So we keep it in situ. So we vote on all the meetings as listed here, the exception of time change, 2023, 2024. But if we do get to that point where we don't have enough members because they're on holiday, it would then potentially be deferred. But yeah, I'll take your point, which then Wendy said as well. So yeah. So when I go back up, one second, scrolling back through my UG. So does anybody else have any questions on the schedule regarding the change of timings, which will be amended accordingly? So I'm happy to propose then that we accept the town council meetings as listed below. All times will be seven thirty PM for the 2023, 2024 year. I'm happy to propose it. Somebody happy to second it? Paul Churchill. If you're in favour of the meeting scheduled for 2023, 24, please raise your hand. So yes, everybody. Designation of signatories, obviously, to appoint councillors with authority to automate payments and sign checks, it is recommended that the chairman of the council, vice chairman, chairman of staffing and finance committee, chairman of planning and advisory committee, and one of the councillor are appointed. So if we look at it from the chairman, it's been myself, Paul Churchill, John Davy, Mike. And would one other councillor like to put their head forward to the shopping block to be a signatory? I don't know who went up first. I'll tell you what, I'm going to switch and I'll set him all night. David's happy to, I mean, we can have to, it's bad just because we need it, aren't we? So Timmy and David then. Anybody else? No? Emma?
We've got coverage in that way, we've got plenty.
Yeah. Therefore, the recommendation is that chairman be myself, the council, vice chair Paul Churchill, John Davy, staffing and finance, Mike, planning advisory chairman, David, Tim and Emma be authorised to become check signatories with authority to automate payments. Do I have somebody to second the motion, please? Roger, thank you, Roger. If you're in favour of the motion and the named individuals, please raise your hand. I see, yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, David, Tim, Emma as well. Eighteen is council process procedures to review the council's possible procedures. Standing orders as amended, December 2020, 2021, seems a long time ago. So no changes required, there's notes there, and final regulations amended September 2022. And again, there are no changes required. Does anybody have any questions? David?
It's probably just a typo. I just got a bit confused reading the finance regulations because I don't date when they're reviewed, don't tally with the versions up on the website, so they just need to be amended.
Yeah, Wendy's got that. Thank you. They will be amended accordingly. Thank you. Anybody else any question? Excuse me. Any question on that one? No. Therefore, I propose to approve the standing orders for obviously, yeah, standing orders on financial regulations, I read that completely wrong. Anybody happy to second the motion with the changes, obviously, that Davy's noted as well? Bob? Thank you, Bob. If you're in favour of passing the motion, please raise your hand. I see, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, David. We've got it amended. Item nineteen is minutes of the last meeting. Consider to improve the minutes, obviously, the extraordinary Porta Town Council meeting, Porta Council meeting held on 2nd of April 2023, which is attached with an appendix nineteen. And obviously, the new councillors obviously can't. So this is only down to Roger, who wasn't here. So Roger can't. I haven't got enough people. No. Yeah, I know. Yeah, we haven't got enough people here, but. Alan wasn't here. We're in trouble. I'm going to defer that one and come back to you. Item twenty, grant applications. My error, hands up. I should have declared my interest, I thought it was on the agenda. January forgot. I've gone through it several times today. Porta Christmas lights, I want to declare an interest in the Porta Christmas lights and also dispensation. Therefore, I will not vote on this item. I have an interest, but also you could now argue pecuniary interest because I was elected as the Health and Safety Advisor for the new trust that's being set up. None of you will know, but the Christmas lights are in the process of applying for charitable status, which started a week ago, I think it was. Therefore, I might have got a new role on them now, so I will not vote on this at all, but I want to check with Wendy. Paul Churchill, can you do the Christmas lights, please? From my laptop, have you got the minutes? Got it there? Yeah. And also, just to be clear, when this did come through the grants working party, when I was under the previous council and also the chairman of the chairman of the Community Matters, I did not vote on it. I had nothing to do with it for obvious reasons. Hand over to Paul Churchill.
Okay, so item twenty is Portishead Christmas lights, entirely voluntary, local, not-for-profit, good cause organisation whose main objective is to organise a rec, switch on an event and take down Christmas festival lights through the centre of Portishead. I think everybody here will realise the huge benefit to the community that those lights bring. And there is a grant application in for £12,500. Without the grant, they would be in severe difficulty of being able to provide the display that we all enjoy every year. And so we Okay, so this is, this is a recommendation for the approval of the grant of £12,500, Portishead Christmas lights. The recommendation is to approve the grant awards for Porta Christmas lights, £12,500. Yeah, so that's right, I'm just looking because it goes on to something else there as well, doesn't it? So yeah, it is only the Christmas lights one at the minute. So can I have a proposer to? Okay, thank you, Roger and the second there. Thank you, Tim. And if we can all have a show of hands for those who support that. To everybody. Thank you.
With the exception of me, obviously.
With the exception of Ben.
Apologies, that was generally my error. Yeah. The second grant is from Naughty District Transport, obviously, community transport, £14,000. This did go through Community Matters and also the Grants Working Party. As you can see here, North Somerset Council contribute £55,000, Naughty Town Council, £14,000, the same as us, potentially. Clevedon, £4,700, Long Ashton, £1,500 and Backwell Parish, £3,000. Obviously, as you can see there, I'm not going to go through all of this. It lays itself out fairly clear. If we don't support them, they will struggle. And it's not the community transport people that will struggle, it's the residents that will struggle in this town. They, people, not everybody has a car, not everybody can get around easily. These guys and girls do an immense amount of work and make sure that people need to get from A to B and get from A to B. The Grants Working Party from the previous council did recommend it. It was deferred for obvious reasons. So as obviously you can see there, it, you know, reduces for relevant things that they do. I'm happy to propose the motion that we award Naughty District Transport Trust, Community Transport, £40,000. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Obviously, I know some of you weren't here, but yeah, David?
It's just a comment really. It'd be great to get them along to one of the council meetings and hear more about what they do.
Yeah, don't disagree with you at all. But that's something I'm going to work on with a number of the groups for this year. Obviously, the Christmas lights do come along. Kim came along last month. Cans have come along. So the idea ultimately is, is these people come and actually talk to the residents, not just councillors, it's ultimately it's the residents' money. And it's important that any questions they've got, they should answer it if they can. So I'm happy to propose the motion, obviously, that Naughty District Community Transport be awarded £14,000. The grant 23, 24. Is somebody happy to propose a second emotion? Emma, thank you, Emma. If you're in favour of awarding the grants, please raise your hands. Thank you. The next part, again, new councillors, you won't know anything about this. Obviously, old councillors, I don't know many will. I got an email a few weeks ago. asking, could I have a phone conversation with Godany Rugby Football Club? They, we awarded them a grant last year for ten thousand pounds towards their new three T pitch they want to put down. However, due to the current climate, their costs have spiralled. They've got significant amount of money. They are confident they will get the remainder of the money. They're asking for some more time. The grant was due to be spent by June this year. Therefore, in theory, they've only got about seven weeks to spend it. It's impossible. Because of the cost of things that has gone up, they've got to raise an extra trench of money, which they're asking, do we have any objections to this grant being granted? Additional twelve months, i.e. they can hold on to the ten thousand pounds which we've awarded them. But they have to spend it by June twenty twenty four. But obviously, that, obviously, again, will be subject to the relevant stipulations within the original grant award request. We've got to be advised it's being spent and see all the evidence that's being spent on it as well. I have been assured this money, all of the money, not just our money, we've given to them, all the money is ring pens in an account. It will not be touched for anything other than the pitch. If the pitch does not happen, I have been assured and I trust them, the money will be returned to this council. Does anybody have any questions on this one? And again, obviously, yes, they're not actually in Portishead, they're in Portbury, but there's an immense amount of children from Portishead, and they are their biggest, again, biggest amount of people that go there. So this is benefiting, of course, the residents, the youngsters in this town again. I'm happy to propose the motion that the grants get granted an extension until June twenty twenty four. Obviously, subject to a full report on the grant usage, as stipulated. Is somebody happy to second the motion? Emma, so you'll go first. Thank you. If you're in favour of granting the extension until June twenty four for the grant, please raise your hands. That is a yes. Thank you. Do you want to inform them? Would you want me to? That's fine, I'm happy to, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I will inform them. I'll email them tomorrow. Hi, thank you. Thank you. Item twenty one is the Penny Fair Budget, which is happening on the twenty seventh of May, twenty twenty three. As you're all aware, we ran a Jubilee event last year. Want to celebrate the Queen's Jubilee, which was an immense achievement, but also to kind of help local businesses and support local businesses across, particularly across Portishead, and the residents to kind of practically come along to a free event. It was an immense success since it rained about half past four, which was gutting. I was terribly ill, which was even worse. Spent two nights in hospital. So we're running the event again this year. It's the coronation event, obviously, one to kind of celebrate, obviously, what's happened, obviously, since we know last year with the Queen no longer being with us, obviously, and the King being coronated on Saturday. But ultimately, this is for the residents and the business supporters head. There are an immense amount of businesses coming to this, along the high streets, businesses that you may not be aware of around the town, relevant charitable groups, foreign life, for example, Freddie B, the Rock Project, which are always in the youth centre, shooting their music and stuff, which is all the kids again, across the town. Espermal PS twenty live music and also the Twizzles. And like I say, there are endless amount of businesses, the youth centre are coming along, Bristol Port are coming along, Shinati Shakes are coming, Cafe Marina are coming. It's endless, the list is endless. But this is to benefit the resident supporters head. It's called the Penny Fair event for one very simple reason. If we didn't say a donation of one penny or whatever you want to give, there would be considerable charges for this event that we would have to charge, have to pay to North Somerset. And that's not North Somerset's fault. Very rarely do I stick up for them. On this occasion, I'm going to. They are required by law to charge for an event. So if we don't, if it's a free entry event and you have stores, you have to pay licensing fees, you have to pay X, Y and Z, and then fees amount to some storeholders for hundreds of pounds. Therefore, by having a one penny donation, they don't have to pay a single fee. They can come to the event, support the event, benefit the residents of this town and have a good day. Like I say, we got in excess of six thousand people there at one point last year, up until the heavens opened. So we had a budget which was agreed back last year for twenty thousand pounds. However, we've just had additional costs coming, which we weren't expecting. It has all been budgeted, literally down to the penny. Thank you to Nikki for this. However, supplier costs have gone up, therefore, we're in a position where we may go over budget. At the moment, we are. But we do have to pay for one item in particular, which is diesel. We have to pay for every single ounce of diesel that we get in advance, because it's for the generators, the lighting, et cetera. Without that, the station, et cetera, can't run. So we're asking for an additional five thousand pounds to cover the expected costs, a raise from twenty to twenty five thousand pounds. However, I am not expecting to spend that additional five thousand pounds. We are running a tight budget because this is town's money. I want to be right with it. This is done for the town for the right reasons. Do I have a proposer to increase the budget up to five thousand pounds for the Penny Fair twenty twenty three? Obviously, what will be submitted post-event? Happy to have a proposer, Paul Churchill. Happy to have a second there, Tim. Thank you. I'm not going to vote on this one. Of course, I'm involved in it. I can, but I'm not going to. Therefore, I'm not saying, I think, if you're in favour of raising the budget up to five thousand pounds, can please raise your hand now. That is a yes. Thank you.
Ben, could I just ask a question, please, in relation to this? The field, do you have to pay a rent on the field or am I right in thinking it sort of half belongs to the council? I mean, the Horticultural Society.
Totally, but it's the Horticultural Society.
It's completely theirs.
Yeah, we rent the field for four days. Four days we rent the field for. So we have it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Mainly because obviously, one is the bank holiday weekend, which is why we chose the weekend, but secondly, because there'll be a lot of kits, a lot of that field, i.e. stage, generators, diesel, toilets, et cetera. It won't go till the Tuesday morning. So yeah, we do rent it on the Horticultural Society. So yeah.
And you're obviously having to pay for security on the, on the gates.
Yeah, which we did last year. Not on the gates per se, there will be security around. It's mainly, they're there from eight P M to seven A M, obviously, because we've got the kits. I won't say what amount it is because it's not the right thing to do, but it's very expensive and some diesel and that. Therefore, we won't want anyone coming off it. We had no issues last year. I expect any issues this year. So yeah, we do pay them. So yeah. And they have been extremely supportive. There's Peter Burden, Linda and the team have been really helpful. So yeah. You'll all notice there's a current film crew on there at the moment, and I was on there yesterday. It's decimated it. So they're going to fix it for us, roll it, spike it, cut it. So it's all ready and pristine. So yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Bob.
Oh, yeah. Ben, I just want, just wondering if you'd like to explain to the public where the donation of the penny goes or anything above a penny?
I kind of wasn't going to until next week. That's fine. So whatever, so last year, for example, we raised, I believe, just north of eighteen hundred pounds was the donation we got through the last year. That was split, was chosen by the residents, the annual residents meeting. That was split fifty fifty between the Portishead Christmas lights and the Wheels and Skate Park group. This year, we're planning on doing the same. So whatever money is raised, whether it's be one penny or a hundred pennies, I would like it to be decided by the residents of the annual residents meeting this week, who they would like the money to go to. Because I believe that the groups should benefit. This is to help people in this town, but the groups should cover nominated. So get your thinking caps on residents, pass the word around. If you are coming next week, please do. It's your meeting. It's your time. So nominate who you would like to go next week. And whoever you vote for, I will be here next week, obviously, but I will not be voting on it. It is your meeting. You will vote who you wish to. So please do support it. So yeah. And if anybody here councillor wise, or anybody in the audience, or anyone knows anybody, if you would like to volunteer, please let me or Nikki know, or anyone know, we need your help. At the moment, we've got about six volunteers. We need your help, guys. Please, I need at least twenty. I've got a dedicated car park team. Thanks to the Christmas lights. So yeah, if you can help out, even if it's two hours of the day. I know Paddy's helping. Obviously, I'll be there all day, but I'm putting a tent up, I think, Friday morning. So yeah, this year I won't have shingles. So yeah, if you can, please do help us. It really is appreciated. It's a lot of hard work, but it's great fun. And hopefully, the town will celebrate it, celebrate the businesses. So thank you. Just before a closer meeting, there's a rather important event happening. Stupid on me, really. Yeah, Skate Park. It's opening on Saturday. A lot of us work bloody hard at this, automatically, which we have. Not just me, not just Jeff, Paul Gardner's helped, all the councillors here have helped, Lisa Stanley. A huge amount of residents have been fighting hard for this, really hard, for many, many, many years. I've been in Portishead since twenty fourteen. I knew about it then, on the first thing I knew about. I've been involved since around about twenty sixteen, and we fought tired, tired for this. It's really important for the town. It's really important for the kids. So Saturday morning, ten o'clock. If I don't see any of you there, I'll come and find you and drag you out of your beds. I hope you'll all be there. So we'll be having a small cutting of the ribbon. It'll be a very small event, soft opening. All the kids possible, please come along. We want the kids to cut the ribbon. This is not about me. It's not about anybody that's done the work behind the scenes. It's about the kids. This is for them. There will be another meet. There will be a grand opening, a massive party on Sunday, the ninth of July this year, between twelve P M and four P M. The event will be run by the company that built the skate park, being Maverick. They've got a group that do the event. There'll be a hog roast, burgers, sausages, all sorts. So put that one in your diaries. But guys, Saturday morning, ten o'clock, it opens. Otherwise, that's it for me. Thanks. Thank you all to councillors. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, Paul. Thank you, Paul. It's appreciated. You're right, there's the people, there's just endless. So yeah, they all deserve, I could list all night probably. But they all know who they are. They're all important. We have asked a certain individual, she'll open the skate park on the ninth of July officially. We are waiting for an answer. So I think it's personally important. I know a lot of others do as well, so I hope she will. Any else want to say anything on this one? Tim?
Hiya. Sadly, I'm working all day Saturday. So if you can arrange somebody with masks on and maybe a van, come and kidnap me, drag me down. But other than that, congratulations and well done.
Thank you, Timmy. Otherwise, that's it, guys. Meeting is closed at eight fifty five P M. The next meeting will be Wednesday, the twenty eighth of June, twenty twenty three. Thank you all.